Central School District Board of Education, Tuesday, May 19th. It is 7:35. All board members are present with the exception of the President who is on her way. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
And we will go to item 1.04, modification and approval of the agenda. Is there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to have the minutes from the May 5th meeting pulled for discussion.
Do I take, yes, do we take it, what do we do, take a vote on it? Okay. We're going to modify the agenda to pull 1.06, minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th, correct? For discussion.
Yes, I make a motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So, any other modifications?
I emailed this, so I don't know if it's done because I can't see down further. To add the turf discussion item. So it is a modification, I don't see it there.
So modification to add the discussion item of turf fields?
Yes, please.
Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? Anyone?
Did you second? No, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So can we add the discussion items turf fields? That'll be at 3.02.
And I have one more modification with regards to the May 5th meeting, which talks about board governance matters in executive session. I have two problems with this. Board governance matters should not be in executive session as per the open meetings laws, section 105a through h. They need to be discussed in open session. It's also a misuse of public funds as we're paying an attorney to sit there without giving us legal advice. Rather, it's a way for board members to discuss governance matters which really should be in open session. So I would like to modify the agenda so that we can have a discussion about this and hopefully agree to no longer put governance matters in executive session and have it in open session.
Is that part of the discussion for the minutes of the regular meeting?
We can have it there if you prefer.
Technically, we're just pulling the vote out of minutes, so it's not a discussion yet until we vote on it.
Dr. Adams, can you help me on this? I'm sorry.
So Marliese, do you want it as a separate discussion item or as part of the minutes?
Can we have a discussion during the minutes or... It doesn't matter to me as long as we have this discussion whether it's appropriate or not to have governance matters in executive session.
Is that the primary objection to the minutes of...
There are several objections to those.
But is that part of it?
It's part of it, yes.
Okay. I think it would be appropriate to discuss it under the minutes at that time.
Okay.
Any other modifications to the agenda? Okay. And moving to 1.05, student report. I think Rachel's in the house.
(Inaudible). No. Yes, yes. Good evening, everybody. How are you? Good. So I walked in here and I knew that I would expect to see all of my fellow STIR classmates who have won awards at the SIT fair, as well as all of the young little STIR-to-be children because that is what you are. You don't know it yet, but you do. You will be STIR students, so don't worry. When you get to the high school, there's a cool program you can do with science research to continue your knowledge in science and it's an amazing program and I could go on and on about it, but feel free to talk to me. My name's Rachel Fisher. So that aside, congratulations to everybody. We just left AP week for the most part. I know there's going to be some makeups in the coming days, but for the most part, everybody is done with APs, which is very exciting and stress relieving and it's now schools just can keep on flowing like as usual. We're in the midst of spring week and today was Toons Tuesday at the high school. And today was Toons Tuesday, so people wore band shirts. Yesterday was Made in America Monday, so red, white, and blue. Tomorrow will be pink. Thursday is college apparel and Friday is extended lunch, so we'll have some fun outside and Mountie Apparel Day. Tomorrow, there will be, at the high school, there will be an assembly for the girls seniors, so everybody who's graduating next year, about the dangers after high school that they might face, such as decision making, date rape, that kind of harsh kind of stuff, but stuff that needs to be discussed. That's tomorrow. On Thursday, there will be our Honors Society induction and as a board member, I will be present on the stage and I encourage board members to come and see the arts in action once again, as well as any of you guys who would like to come for that. There will also be a Science Honors Society induction, but that will be next Wednesday, May 27th. I will be inducted into that as well. And then the day after that, Thursday, May 28th, there is a spring concert. And then June 1st is our Evening of Excellence, which I believe is the scholarship recipients receiving their scholarships. If there's any questions? Nope? All right. Have a good evening. Thank you so much.
And that brings us to 1.06, minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th.
But will 1.06 be under the discussion items then?
Yeah, we should probably move it to discussion.
Discuss it and then vote on it.
Okay. So we'll move that to discussion items. Then we are at...
And just for clarification, we have field testing is 3.01. And then, do you want the, because you mentioned the minutes first, do you want the minutes to be 3.02 and then turf fields to be 3.03 or does it matter? Marliese, does it matter? We'll go turf fields 3.03 and then the minutes 3.02. That's all right.
Then we're at 1.07, minutes of the special meeting of May 13th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. DeGaim, all in favor? That we're there?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? No? Two abstentions. And brings us to why everybody's here. 1.08, Superintendent comments, and I hand it over to Dr. Adams.
As you can see on the agenda, we have two recognitions, one for Eagle Scout and then the SIT awards recognition. And with the SIT awards recognition, it's of particular interest to me. It's perhaps my favorite school board meeting of the year in that, you know, it deals with science and your innovation, technology, the math, and it's something that I've always been fascinated with. My undergraduate degree was in environmental engineering, so it's, you know, of course of great interest. And then the doctoral degree dealt with data development analysis for efficiency and effectiveness, which may, you know, big words, but it doesn't mean a whole lot other than it was all based upon calculus that I had learned in high school and college that I ended up applying at a PhD level or an EDD level. So that was great, but to see the young scientists in here, the young mathematicians, I think is wonderful. And then the seniors and then some of the folks in between. I had attended the STIR symposium, it's probably been three or four weeks ago, and the projects and the presentations that the kids had, it was really amazing. I started, I came in kind of the back instead of the front where the seniors were, so I came in where the younger students were and I hoped they were the seniors because the quality of the work and the presentation was just truly amazing. And it's a tribute to the students, to the staff, to the parents, to be totally involved like that. So this is, for me, I spent, I don't know, an hour and a half or two hours just looking at the various presentations, asking lots of questions, which sometimes makes the kids feel uncomfortable, like maybe Rachel did. But I like to see how they think and then to see the senior presentations, and that was kind of a special part of the evening where the seniors went last and they had 15 to 20 minutes or so to go over their projects and it's really amazing what they've accomplished. And so for the youngsters out here, the elementary age kids, you know, we've got great curriculum, great teachers here, and you have great opportunities, so take advantage of those and no telling where you'll be someday. And one last thing, and I know you don't want to listen to me talk, but the top 10% students, a couple of weeks ago when we recognized their accomplishments, I believe 25 of the 36 or 37 students had indicated they were going to be science, technology, or engineering majors. And I can't help but to think the exposure that you have to such a great curriculum here and to great teaching didn't help to excite you to get into those programs. So without further ado, I will recognize our Eagle Scout. Where's our Eagle Scout at? You know, the Eagle Scouts, they have to go through a lot of training and a lot of exercises to get, to have that great distinction. And I'd like Cameron to go ahead and maybe just describe a little bit about the project.
Sure. My project was building a wheelchair accessible sand table at San Moss for Juatio, which is a center for the disabled in New City. And it went really well. I'm from troop 21 in Suffolk and Great Truth. And thanks so much.
And then Linda, do you like to...
This year, 69 students from the Grand Central School District participated in the countywide 29th Annual Science Inventions and Technology Exhibition, which was held on April 26th at North Rockland High School. And once again, our school district had the largest number of participants countywide. That includes not only public schools, but private schools and home school resort shows. We are very proud of each participant's achievements and the effort that was put forth on the research, experimentation, and completion of their long-term science investigations. Of the 65 awards presented at the exhibition, Grand Central Schools received 38, and those 38 awards... They spanned the categories of engineering, environmental sciences, mathematics, physics, inventions, behavioral science, computer science, earth science, medicine and health, biochemistry, botany, microbiology, zoology, and chemistry. Countywide, our students impressively earned the following awards. We earned honorable mention, first place, second place, and third place awards in the grades 5 through 6 inventions category. We earned honorable mention, first place, second place, and third place awards in the grade 5 science category. We were awarded first place in the grade 69 science medicine category. We were awarded first, second, and third place awards in the grade 11 science category and first and second place awards in the grade 12 science category. And I think that honors our students around them. This evening, our Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Adams, would like to acknowledge the award-winning achievements of these students. I'm going to share with you this year, not only your awards, but the title of their projects, and as they come up, they will receive a certificate from Dr. Adams and stay for a photo session at the end. Second place, science, grade 5 countywide, and a Novartis Engineering Award for grades 5 through 9 for the project Comparing Ridge Designs Salma Kane. For the Novartis Botany Award, grades 5 through 9, for the project The Effect of Different Plant Beds, Moist Paper Towel Versus Potting Soil, Karina Seglinski. The Pfizer Medicine and Health Grades 10 through 12 Award for the Effects of Induced Huntington's Disease on the Behavior of Male Zebras Pinches. The award goes to Hannah Kinsiglio as well as second place overall in the county for the grade 12 science award. The Susan Staub Science Teachers Memorial Award is awarded to the Backpack Plus Project for Anthony Cuman. For the New Jersey and New York border Love of Science Award is a trophy which was given to the invention Anti-Shark Protection, Anna Donadio. Second place overall in Rockland County for the grade 11 science category for the project Analyzing the Thermal Stability of Glassy Metallic Alloys, Jeremy Doman. Third place countywide in the grade 11 science category for the project The Correlation Between Locusts of Control, Perf- Perfectionist Traits, and Competitive Anxiety with Performance in Artistic Gymnastics, Rachel Fisher. The Novartis Zoology Award for grades 10 through 12, the project Was Decline in Health of Honeybees, John Gilbert. The Pfizer Behavioral Science Award for grades 5 through 9 for the project Tree Versus Technology, Zachary Goodman. Rockland County, second place overall for the inventions category in grades 5 through 6, as well as the Teacher Award for Stu's Susan Staub Memorial Inventions for the invention Shower Box, Juliana Hodge. The Collaboration of Novartis and Pfizer Award for Microbiology, grades 10 through 12, for the project Renewing the Effectiveness of Antibiotics, John Isaac. First place countywide in the science category for grades 6 through 9, the team of Brittany Cantrowitz and Sam Cantrowitz for the Cantro Light Challenge. First place countywide for grade 11 in the science category for the project Worm Therapy as an Alternative to Decreasing Inflammation in Mice, Rachel Kat. Project Study of Agricultural Methods and Agriculture, Nutrient Deficiency and Balance in an Apple Honing System, the team of Ashley Kim and Katie Kim. The Rockland County Medical Society Award for grade 11 and the American Association of Physicians of Indian Origin Award for grade 11. The project was The Impact of Bimanual Activities on Brain-to-Muscle Coordination and Upper Limb Motor Control Within Children Diagnosed with Pema Flay, like, I hope I'm saying that right, cerebral palsy, and that is Nithya Kumar. First place overall, Rockland County for the science category in grade 5, as well as the Susan Staub Memorial Award for teachers for the project The Destiny of Muffins and Their Density, Owen Lee. Rockland County, third place inventions award for grades 5 through 6, and the Susan Staub Teacher Memorial Award goes to the invention That Happy Mouth Toothbrush by Samantha Seem. The Novartis and Pfizer Honorable Mention for overall science category for grade 5, as well as the Pfizer Chemistry Award for grades 5 through 9, goes to the project Climate Effects on Baked Goods, Mark Maloff. The Novartis and Pfizer Environmental Award for grades 5 through 9, as well as the Spataro Associates Research Award, goes to the Is Fertilizer Algineous Project, Devani Morthe. The Spataro Associates Award for Looking Closer at Microscopic Elements, a microscope was awarded for the project Rates of Oxidation of Steel, for the team of Emma Munchnick and Nicholas Romanoli. First place overall, Rockland County in the category of inventions for grades 5 through 6, as well as the Susan Staub Memorial Teacher Award, goes to the project The Invention Earwormies for the team of Jenna Mihal and Alexandra Shum. Overall, Rockland County, third place science award for grade 5, as well as the Novartis Microbiology Award for grades 5 through 9, for the project Our Fingerprint Patterns Genetic, Frankie Tenelli. The Rockland County Medical Society Award for grades 5 through 9, the Novartis and Pfizer Medicine Health Award for grades 5 through 9, the American Association of Physicians of Indian Origin Award for grades 5 through 9, and the Susan Staub Teacher Memorial Award goes to the project Allergy Island, Allergies and Eosynabolic Esophagitis, Jack Weiss. To our young people, congratulations on your well-deserved contribution. I'd like to leave you with the same words you heard me say at the award ceremony at the SIT exhibition this year. Always remember the difference between achievement and success. Achievement is the knowledge that you have studied and worked hard and done the best that is in you. Success is being praised by others, and that's nice too, but not as important or satisfying. Always aim for achievement. Congratulations.
Parents, you want to get a few more pictures? 20 seconds, 20 seconds.
I'm proud.
See, it all started with you.
Oh my God, Ariel, look at you. What are you doing?
What are you doing?
Oh, you're shooting. Good for you.
Okay. That was awesome. That was awesome. Yeah, that's the record reflect I am here, so it's a work issue we're going to deal with first. Angela, you have my time for entering, so just the record reflect that I will be chairing the meeting, I guess from this moment forward. I believe we are at 1.09, is that correct?
Yes.
Public participation, public participation is to action items only, that's 2.01 to 2.07, unless there was something added to my access, but I don't believe so. Public participation on action items only. And I'll open it up to the floor. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public participation portion of that meeting. All right, action items, 2.01 through 2.07, not sure if there's a discussion about any of those items needing to be pulled. Nope. The chair would entertain, would like to use a consent agenda with respect to those items. So chair would entertain a motion to approve 2.01 through 2.07 as so presented.
So moved.
Standing second.
Stand here.
Nope. Still long? I was gonna, but I think Craig beat him, so.
Sorry to intrude.
Any discussion? Nope. Nope. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? And it is moved. Okay, discussion items, 3.01, titled Field Testing.
Right, so I had asked for that to be added to the agenda, which it was, so thank you very much. And the reason why was because a lot of community members were asking me what's going on with field testing this year, what's happening, and then at the last meeting there was a question about it where they reviewed how many tests. So I had sent out that email asking, you know, how does this potentially benefit our students? How does this benefit the district? What are the repercussions of opting out? And how is it that other districts are opting out? And so, Dr. Adams, do you want me to read the email that you responded to, or do you want to summarize it?
I think I'll go ahead and ask Lee whether to summarize it, if that's all right.
Yeah.
We tried this year to take a fresh look at field testing. Field testing's been going on in the state for a very, very long time. So we tried to take a look at it with fresh eyes, and we first did that by consulting with our attorney and finding out what the legalities were on, were we required to field test. In the past, we were always told we were required to. We didn't necessarily follow up on that and look to see where it said we had to do that. The schools each receive a letter, the superintendent receives a letter, that's very clearly worded that this is the expectation. When we looked into it with the attorney this year, it was determined that it does not appear in the commissioner's regulations that field testing is required, so therefore there's not a law that says you have to field test. We also consulted with a number of districts, both within the county and in other parts of the state, districts that had chosen not to administer field tests last year, to find out if there were any repercussions or what the consequence, any consequences that could have occurred from that. In everyone that we spoke to, it was determined that there were no repercussions. We could not find evidence of any district that did not offer the field test last year that had repercussions, so we didn't find any evidence of that. So based on that, those two factors, we discussed with Dr. Adams the possibility of not giving them. So then it became an issue of what is the impact on our children. As was stated, I believe, in the public participation at the May meeting, the field tests are given to our students. We take the tests, we put them in a box, and we send them back. We don't look at the questions, we don't score them, there is no information shared back with us about the questions. So in that sense, there is no value to our students or our teachers. There's also different forms of the field test, so in any room, all the kids aren't necessarily taking the same field test. So there's multiple forms, so it's not even that they're looking at the same questions. So there is so little value, I would say that it becomes insignificant. The value in the field testing is that every question that appears on a state test has been field tested at some point. So by our not participating in field testing, it impacts the future of those questions on future assessments. It doesn't affect the children who take the field test, it affects children in the future because the questions will have had fewer other children to field test them previously. We felt that that wasn't a significant enough reason to administer the field test this year.
Sounds great. What percentage of districts don't field test? Do you happen to know that?
Absolutely. No, I don't know it. I do know that last year, there was another district in Rockland that did not administer them. I know that this year, there is another district, a different district in Rockland that is not administering them, and, well, the one from last year, last I heard, is going to do it this year. They're under different leadership, but I don't know that that was a final decision, so I don't want to speak for them. The other districts we spoke to were in Duchess, Westchester, and Long Island, and Potman.
It certainly sounds like a very diligent and very good process. Is this, so every year we're going to reassess this? Is that what you plan in the future?
Hadn't thought about it that far or talked about it that far yet.
It's one of the questions that I was getting from the community was, well, when do we find out?
When do we find out what?
Or not?
We usually are notified within the month, within a month of receiving, of when the test is supposed to be given. So this year, they were in May and June, so we found out with about a month lead time.
Okay, thank you.
Just a small question, when was the decision made this year? The decision not to administer them?
Last week, maybe the week before? Last week or the week?
Very recent.
Last week, it was last week, yes.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, when you said that we receive the test in May or what have you, so some years we're not field testing or not chosen to field test?
Correct. And so, for instance, this year, we were chosen at the high school, and that one occurs a little earlier, that one would have been in May. We were not chosen at all at the middle school this year. We were chosen at various elementaries and various grades for various tests, those would have taken place in June. So every year, it's just some kind of random algorithm. It's not totally random, it is, there's a little bit of reason to it, not much.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, 3.02 is? 3.02, discussion regarding meeting minutes.
So that's me as well. I guess the easiest and the first thing to resolve is under information items, I had brought it up at the last meeting. Item 3.01, still reads synthetic turf field, Evidence of Safety. And that wasn't the information that was presented, and I don't think that we have the authority to say Evidence of Safety. So I would like to, I guess, make a motion, or however you want me to do this, to suggest that we change that title.
I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up the minutes. They're long. So synthetic turf field, Evidence of Safety. That's okay. Is that, I mean, once we set an agenda and set a title, I'm just asking, is that something that we can change?
Well, what ended up happening is we had a discussion actually about, Dr. Adams presented about other options that are available. I believe that was the actual?
Infill options.
Right. The actual presentation was other infill options besides chrome rubber, so it wasn't Evidence of Safety. And actually, I presented as well, and so did Dr. Howard, about unsafety, so it's actually the opposite. So we either add un or we?
Or just remove.
My question was just, can you go back and change the type?
Well, the minutes are the minutes of what actually happened. I don't know that you can change it back into the agenda, but.
Yeah, I think that if you decide to strike that as well, in other words, I would keep it as?
Synthetic turf fields.
Synthetic turf field, but just strike Evidence of Safety, but I think that's, this way the minutes would reflect it.
Because that's not what happens. Do we need to vote for that? Move to modify that section of?
Yeah, I think we should put it on record that we are.
All right, so chair would entertain a motion to modify section 3.01 of the minutes.
3.01 from May.
From May.
No, the 3.01 on the minutes from May.
Sorry. 3.01, the minutes from May, to delete the words Evidence of Safety, thereby leaving synthetic turf fields.
Correct. So I make that motion?
Marley's? Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that? On that minutes, there's more discussion, but not on that item. We're just going to take a vote. And then maybe we'll just do them all together, if any of changes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Good idea. I'll note here.
On May? No, May fit, they were there. Not that there's, this is May fit.
Yeah, May fit, we were all there. Everybody was in line. Not me. Okay. Record reflect, that was unanimous. Angela, I know you're.
The second, the second issue I'd like to discuss is number 1.04, and I know this was brought up in an email prior to. It says that Dr. Howard left executive session at 6:15 at the start of the discussion on board governance, and Dr. DeGaim left at 6:25. So a couple issues. First of all, board governance was not listed on the executive session agenda. Secondly, so when we went into executive session, we did not agree to discuss that. Secondly, board governance as a matter should not be discussed in executive session. I've consulted with the Committee on Open Government, it does not meet any of the criteria, which I can read out here, it will take a while, but it's section A through H on 105 of the Open Meetings Law about what can or can't be discussed in executive session, and governance matters cannot because they are inherently related to policy, and that needs to happen in open meeting. In addition, having an attorney present, if that attorney is not speaking and giving advice, which he was not, it does not constitute attorney-client privilege. As stated right here, let's see, in order to assert attorney-client privilege, the attorney must be providing services in which the expertise of an attorney is needed and sought. If at some point during attorney-client communication, the attorney has stopped giving advice and the public body has begun to discuss or deliberate independently of the attorney, the attorney-client privilege ends. Therefore, we're paying Mr. Framson to sit in the room while there's a discussion of governance matters, which first of all, doesn't belong in executive session, belongs in open session, and we're paying him to sit in the room and not offer any advice. So for two reasons, I suggest that we no longer discuss governance matters in executive session and only discuss them in open session. Does anybody have any opinions about that?
Sorry, you have the policy number on that. Is that 2360?
The policy, I can pull it out, sure. One policy is on the executive session, and the other policy is with regards to what should or shouldn't be written in minutes, we actually are not required to write when somebody exits executive session or not.
So the 2360 is named minutes.
2360 is?
I'm looking at it here.
Exactly.
And I just want to make sure that's the correct one.
So it's, the only thing that talks about in 2360 is if a board member is not present at the opening of a meeting, the subsequent arrival time of such a member shall be indicated in the minutes. Nowhere does it say that you need to indicate entry or exit from executive session, nowhere does it say that you have to indicate when somebody leaves. And then the other one on executive session does not mention it either. And so, but the overarching principle is that we really shouldn't be talking about governance issues in executive session. You know, having an attorney present does not mean that we have attorney-client privilege and should be discussing in executive session, it's an open session.
Yeah, I don't, and I know the minutes don't reflect any of that leading meetings, and I think what's more important is with respect to the meeting starting with, I think it leaves Robert's rules, a meeting starting with a form, and then people leaving in the middle like a form. With respect to the governance issues, we've had retreats where we've talked about governance issues. I'd just like to see if that's any, I mean, I don't have any issue with taking it out in these minutes, but I'd just like to follow up and see if there's any issues with respect to when NISBA comes down or somebody else comes down, they go, we have governance meetings and it's just us and the government is meeting, or with the NISBA representative, sometimes our attorney's there, sometimes not, it's been a myriad of different types of formats, so just with respect to that. But at least as far as this is concerned, I mean, I don't really have any issue taking it out. I don't know if anybody else does, unless there's something else, I'll hold off on making a motion or entertaining a motion at this point until we're, I guess, done.
And the only thing I wanted to ask also is, I want to review the policy to make sure, so we do have a meeting Friday, so we can pull that policy, we can review it, just so that we, it's 2330, I just looked it up here. So, well, 2330 is the one that talks about executive session and governance, and then 2360 is in regards to the minutes, which you referred to initially, Marley's. So if we can pull, I mean, we already changed the 2360 and, you know, did that here, but the 2330 I definitely want to review prior to making any decisions, just since we're meeting and we can do that this week.
You mean about the entry? So do you initially make a decision on taking it out today, or you have no issue with taking it out today, but then further study in policy?
Correct. I want to, both policies will review. The 2360 regarding the executive session and governance, I want to be able to read through. I'm fine with taking it out today, but then review it as far as the policy.
Well, I think that's not the point. The point is, governance shouldn't happen in executive session, period. So the fact, the executive session agenda was over.
I don't think the intent was that it was happening in executive session. It's a more governance meeting after executive before we come back into the public session. But again, you know, I think maybe with policy, when they look at 2360, and I understand what you're saying, look at the issue of whether or not when NISBA comes down, or when we have some sort of retreat like that, if there's an issue with respect to that, being private.
But governance shouldn't even be in a quorum outside, somewhere in between no man's land of executive and public. Governance needs to happen in public.
I know, but when we have retreats, it's not in public.
Retreats, no, retreats, actually I spoke with NISBA about that, retreats are permitted on governance, so if you have a retreat on governance, that is permitted. It's just that, if it's not in a retreat, we can't be having, you know, this is how you ask questions, or this is how you do this, or this is how you do that, that has to happen in public. It can't happen in executive session.
That was the really discussion, but, okay, I don't have an issue with it, if you want to take that.
I have a couple of things to point out.
In addition, or?
On the same topic. So on the same minutes, since we're resolving these minutes, so I'm telling if I'm going to mention your name a couple of times, it states that Mr. Bellato, it states that Mr. Bellato was not present when the meeting started, public session, he arrived during executive session, it states that, but we have him voting on the motion to adjourn on executive, so we need to fix that.
Wait, it says he arrived during executive?
Right, so he couldn't have voted on the motion to adjourn to executive session.
If he's there, why can't he adjourn?
He wasn't there. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, to go into?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant to go about it.
So we need to delete Mr. Bellato because he couldn't vote unless he sent his. So we need to delete Mr. Bellato because he couldn't vote unless he sent his.
Motion. Okay, so that's the first. I'm sorry, wait a minute. So you're looking at 1.03, motion to adjourn to executive session, correct?
Correct.
It says, motion by Maureen Danzig, second by Craig Mall.
And he's saying yea after that.
Oh, he's saying yea. Okay, so we're getting him out of the yea.
So he can't say yea because he's not here. So we need to make that correction, okay? This is something I just saw on the way here, so I would have emailed about this, but I didn't.
Maybe a better tape machine. So we need a better microphone and a better tape machine. Yes, so when, we can hear everybody.
I mean, it's a little error, but we have to fix it.
All right, so.
Before we improve those minutes.
Tom, Bellato, sorry, Tom, we're taking you out of 1.03.
Sorry.
All right. We're taking you out early, Tom.
And on the item regarding executive session, following that, where it states some board members exited at a certain time, we also did not make a point, we've never noted that in our executive session.
Right, that we just said.
Yes, but I have a little more to say.
Okay.
You know, it hasn't been a practice, so we do need to make a decision as a board and vote on it if we would like to start making it a practice. For example, we didn't note when Mr. Bellato arrived, what time it was, you know, so, and I also spoke to NISBA about this, just so I can educate myself, and basically, there is no requirement to note arrivals and departures, as Marlies said, but it's something we could start, we could try as a board, if we feel it's relevant to do it, we would have to vote on that. We would have to discuss it and vote on it.
I think that's why Teresa's going to review the policy.
Not done.
I'm sorry.
Continuing, moving forward, therefore, this has not been a practice. So it also hasn't been a practice when other members have left in the past, because I went and saw that other members have left executive session for one reason or another, and it was not noted on those meetings. So if we're going to start a new practice, we need to all discuss it, vote on it, et cetera. It's only required in public session because then we have to establish the quorum process, like Teresa mentioned, that then it's valuable information to know who arrived and who left because we're voting on items, but we're not voting during executive. So that's the piece that, you know, they educated me about. The other piece is that definitely, and I spoke to someone who was very reluctant to say we're doing anything wrong, but definitely, absolutely, no governance issues are allowed in executive session. No ifs or buts about it. There's a list A through H that we're allowed to discuss in executive. This is not one of them. It cannot be an item. Overall, it wasn't an item that was on that agenda either. I went back to the agenda and it wasn't listed. So as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Framson was done speaking to us. We had covered all items on his agenda, and he was no longer speaking. So again, I'd like to remove that whole clause from the minutes about board members leaving during executive, specifically stating board governance.
The whole thing should be removed because the executive session agenda was over.
Right.
Because board governance is not part of the executive session.
So we remove the wording from 1.04.
Remove everything that's underneath.
And then moving forward, we do need to discuss if we want to have a policy about arrivals and departures. We do need to continue that discussion.
So I'm looking at, sorry, I'm looking at the policy 2360, which talks about the minutes. So it only officially in the policy, which is our policy, states that if a board member arrives late to executive session, that that time should be recorded. It does not refer to the departure time.
Which unfortunately, we didn't. I'm trying to point out, we didn't know the late arrival, so it's actually lacking what the policy says, is that when someone arrived late, we needed to note that.
Right, so I'm just going by what the policy says, so that we're following our own policies, trying to keep up with what we're looking at, and that's what it says in here. So I think we removed it already, right? Didn't we agree?
We have to agree.
Well, we agreed, yes. So, but I just wanted to clarify, it does absolutely.
My only thought with respect to, is this better? Okay, thank you. My only thought with respect to attendance in executive session, I would say, and again, this is something for policy, maybe when you guys sit down, if enough people leave executive session as to not have a quorum, that I think should be noted, because at that point, executive session ceases. So to me, that would be the only time to indicate if you have.
Which was my point, that we can pull both of these policies, we can review them, we can.
None of this.
I think it all cut out.
Did they all cut out?
I think so.
They all cut out in here. So we can pull both of those policies for Friday. We can review them. We can add the wording that states if X amount of members leave and no longer have a quorum, that that is recorded in the minutes, reflect that, but we can discuss that until after Friday. So that was a great discussion.
And we can agree to the governance matters in executive session.
We're going to review that policy as well as getting information on governance and looking at the information that you shared, and then we will bring it back. So that's why we have the policy committee. We bring it, we review it, we talk about it, and we'll just get all the facts.
And I was, I was in conversation with our school attorney, and he's going to be buying governance issues and outside, and show up.
Right, I mean, you know. And our attorney.
So I don't want to make a, I don't want to make a decision now to say we're going to change the policy necessarily without getting all that information, talking to the right people, and doing it through the policy committee, and then we can go from there.
Right. The law receives the policy, so we need to double-check what the law says, and then do that with every policy.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so Chairman intended motion is to modify the minutes with respect to 1.03, I'll talk right back. 1.03 to take out Mr. Bellato, and with 1.04, let's strike the wording of that sentence.
Well, the whole thing, the exit and everything.
Can. So Chairman intended motion, somebody? Danzig, second, Ms. Monahan. All those in favor? We've had our discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Any objections? No, so. And in addition to that, policy will take into consideration those two policies that we have for Friday. Right? Okay.
And just for the board's information, Mr. Walker and Ms. Weber had to leave because it's election night, and they are going to their respective schools to collect the ballots after nine o'clock. I didn't want you to think they were rudely getting up to leave a meeting. They're, they have an assignment.
They have an assignment. Okay, so we have, I believe, in 3.03, turf field, entitled turf fields. I'm not sure if. Come on.
Okay, so regarding turf, the first piece of information I need to make sure everybody is aware, and if they haven't checked their email, I have a printout here for them. I won't say Tom again. We received an email from a doctor, another doctor besides the statement we read on May 13th. This was from Dr. Philip Landrigan. He is a medical doctor, as well as a master of science, as well as his postdoctoral fellow who has a PhD and a master of public health, Sarah Evans. They both sent an email appealing to our Board of Education and addressed to our Board of Education specifically regarding, basically saying, please do not use rubber chrome turf in your fields. So it was a very strong, you know, straight statement to us as a board. So attached to that was a lengthy letter that I just sent over. For those who haven't read it, everybody has it on their email. I could get hard copies. And besides the letter, which was very, very detailed and poignant, there was also some sort of a guide on different types of synthetic turf and the chemicals present in them. So it's like a consumer guide on synthetic turf. If anyone in the public is interested in, again, this testimonial or this information, we've made it our point that we're, you know, sharing information with the public and being transparent, I'm happy to forward those. I have a couple of extra printed copies, but, you know, I'm happy to forward it because we have an electronic file. Basically, Dr. Landrigan has also a research study that we could go back and look at. He cited some of it in the letter. It's not dry science. It actually, he has a PowerPoint online that you can find if you Google him, and the PowerPoint is made for the layman or a non-medical person to understand it, so it's very easy to follow. Sorry. Very, very simple. You know, he used it for some presentations, basically. So please go refer to that. He is, you know, his position, his title is that he is in charge of the Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai School of Medicine. Basically combines pediatrics and public health together. So his expertise is very valuable.
What's the website?
If you Google Philip Landrigan on turf, the presentation pops right up.
Amani, can you review what the center is?
What? Sorry?
Can you, can you review? So the center is actually part of the AAP?
Right, which is the American Academy of Pediatrics. So a very, very reputable agency that serves children and environmental and public health problems that affect child, children and youth specifically. This is their area of expertise. So it's at Mount Sinai School of Medicine, and, you know, everybody resorts to them or refers to them for information. They're the Mecca of this area. So please go back to read that letter. It's very important. It has very valuable information for us to know when we're making our decisions. The other piece is that we have a statement posted on the district website as of sometime today. I don't believe the statement was posted on behalf of the Board of Education because there wasn't enough time, I guess, to put into consideration some of the edits or the corrections that some of us had requested. So it was posted as the first draft. We saw that I had corrections personally, I can only speak for myself, that weren't made, so I am just clarifying that this is not a statement on behalf of the board, and it wasn't posted as such. Am I correct to assume that?
I think that was a statement, I can correct if I'm wrong, but at the last meeting we had, in fact, we had our attorney sitting at the meeting to listen to the discussion that we had, and then he was going to write up the statement with respect to what we put on the, on the website. And that is, hold on, and that is, in fact, what we received from him. I think he was, the concern, I think he had was ensuring that it didn't either advocate or not advocate for any portion of the budget or the proposition. And that's what he presented via email from somebody sent.
Okay, so basically, I spoke with Mr. Framson regarding my concerns about the statement in its first form, and he explained that he sat through the May 13th meeting and took notes, and these were the, you know, the ideas that he saw being exchanged, and that any edits or corrections to it or additions would have to be by a board decision. We would have to communicate. I communicated my concerns on Friday when they were first posted. I believe another board member communicated concerns on Friday when they were first posted. I only got an email back, they're fine as they are. I want to make it clear, this is not my statement. It's not on my behalf. I disagree with some of the items in it, and I definitely had concerns, some additions that I would have liked to see. So I want to clarify, this was not, you know, we did not all agree on this.
And I think as we go on, we continue through the process, the statement is going to change.
Right.
To conform with whatever adjuvant is taken.
So in its current condition, it does not represent my position. I just want to clarify that. So moving on from that, we need to start formatting a plan as a board and working with administration, obviously, on where do we go next after all this information that we've been receiving. So a few ideas came up. Maureen was present and Marlies at the presentation that went on on Thursday. We shared some of the, Maureen forwarded the rest of the board, some of the flyers that, you know, the handouts that were given during the presentation. It's all important information to really go back and read it and study it closely while we're trying to decide what we're going to use. Also, there was a mention and a very strong stand from that organization and from the speaker about natural turf fields. And I know a lot of people will cringe about the idea of natural turf. There's the issue of playing in the rain. There's the issue of depleting the natural turf in that.
When you, I'm sorry, when you say natural turf?
Natural turf would be.
Are you talking about grass?
Would be turf grass, yes.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to.
Yes.
The term word turf, I didn't know.
We use turf.
Everything's turf, right, through the artificial.
Yes. Artificial versus natural. So we had looked at different items. We had looked at artificial turf with organic infill as an option. We had also said that natural turf, which is grass that comes as, you know, rolled-out grass and not seed on the ground, therefore, immediately you have a field, so you don't require waiting, is a natural turf field. So that still should not be off the table, and especially for those who listened to the presentation. We were given an example with an East Meadow School District in Long Island that has had excellent experience with natural turf, purely natural turf, and their fields were described as better than the NFL fields. People go there to just look at them and learn how they've been able to maintain them. Given the laws in New York State, there's the Child Play Act that came out in 2010. For those who are not familiar with it, it prevented certain pesticides from being used, most pesticides, and reduced it to a very short list of chemicals that are allowed in daycares and schools to be used in grounds where children are going to be playing. So we're committed to that law, first of all. So people who are concerned about natural turf because of pesticides need to be assured we can only use what the law allows, which is a very limited list. In spite of that limited list, we were told that the assistant to the superintendent in East Meadow, his name is Mr. Patrick Pizzo, is very generous with sharing information about his success story and his, you know, staff's success story in producing this amazing natural turf field. I think it's very valuable for us to not rule that out yet and to definitely give it a serious consideration, perhaps invite him to speak to the board. We were discussing on the 13th possibilities of having some guest speakers that come and talk to us and answer our questions. He could be a good candidate for that. I'm more than happy to organize that we go to his district and take a look at these fields and see how realistic that is, because a lot of people are ready to rule out that possibility without really studying it. There's also, since that law, that act in 2010 in New York State, so much free training available for school districts and facilities staff. So we need to start taking advantage of that free training, which again, Patty Wood on Thursday offered more of that, and, you know, we all heard her say, we'll come to you, we'll train your staff, you know, we'll show you how to maintain a natural field using, you know, organic materials and that shortlist that the state requires, and still have great success. I think that's important, no matter what kind of turf we decide to use, because even our regular fields and, you know, the non-turf that's at the high school and elementary school have suffered, and many coaches as well, have suffered since that law came out, because we haven't been successful in producing a beautiful grass field now that we have the limitations. So I think let's look into that closely, take advantage of free training. Free material was available at some point, I hope it's still available, and talk to this district about, you know, their success story and whether we can have the same. One of the things she said is after a rainy game or a lot of abuse to the field, they have this mix with seeds in it that they throw out right away. They have it down to a science, and it replenishes, and it's constantly thick and beautiful. So let's not rule out, you know, natural turf yet. And then if we are looking, and we should be looking also, at the synthetic turf fields with organic infill, we need to get specs, we need to make the specs public, we need to look at material safety data sheets, make those public, look into them, and get expert advice from someone or an agency that's unbiased, not linked to the seller or the turf companies, completely, you know, neutral and scientific. So we need to work on that. So we talked about hosting some guest speakers. We could get, you know, toxicologists, we can get, you know, facilities people to talk to us. She said she would come back if you guys choose to bring her. We can invite anyone else you wish. You know, I have a lot of. You know, I have a lot of contacts in the area and I'd be happy to pursue them. Finally, Dr. Adams and I discussed the point of the current fields. We do not disagree about the fact that the current fields are deteriorating, as we know. And Dr. Adams expressed interest in hopefully having our current fields tested. So we need to pursue that as well. Making sure that they're safe for the time being to play. And I would recommend that we test them as soon as we're done with playoffs, which is another week or two, that our kids are finishing up their season. Have some reputable agency come and do some air and soil testing for these turf fields. So that's all I have to say today. I really need everyone to get to work on this regardless of the vote today, whether it's a yes or no. Our work is cut out for us. We need to get going. Thank you.
I just want to mention one thing that I was trying, that I asked you about. So the Mount Sinai group that Amani is talking about is actually, it's the AAP Council of Environmental Health that set up regional centers in collaboration with the CDC. So these are your reputable people. And ours happens to be at Mount Sinai. And the person who sent us the letter is the professor who is the head of this pediatric environmental health center. And they are the ones that put out, you know, statements on behalf of the AAP Environmental Health, so the American Academy of Pediatrics. This is their thing that they've collaborated with, with the CDC. So this is a very important letter that we received from them. And these are really the experts that have no bias. They're not paid for by the tire company. In fact, probably for them to get funding is incredibly difficult because the NIH has no money to fund anything. So that letter is extremely powerful. And then I second Amani's point about either way, whatever the result of this vote is, we need to move forward and do our research because either way, we're going to need to do our research anyway and have a timeline for when we're going to present this and make decisions.
One little item I forgot to mention is that we need the information from all vendors that carry turf fields, not just one or two. We need to really cast a wide net. They all have different products, they come at different prices. We need to look at, obviously, safety is first and foremost. Then we look at cost, you know, differences, and then performance. I'm, you know, an athletic parent, so I care about performance. We also need to get input from all the stakeholders in the community. We need to talk to the coaches and get their input as well and, you know, parents, children who play on these fields and understand their concerns and talk to other districts that have put different types of products. We can't just listen to what the vendors say, but everybody and all stakeholders in the community, please.
I agree. Thank you, Amani and Marlies. Is there anything further on that topic?
Could I say a few things, President Phil?
Sure.
Along the lines, I think, of what Marlies and Amani are alluding to, I guess I've spent maybe 44 or 45 hours the last 10 days researching the topic. It's something that I take very seriously in terms of the safety of the kids and the adults that are on the field, or fields, plural. And so, you know, just in thought of looking at the board meeting tonight, trying to provide a structure or a framework for us to move forward. And so in terms of a reporting mechanism, the board gets to decide the specifications and whether it's synthetic turf, what the infill is, or whether it's natural grass. But just so we all kind of have the same pieces of information, I've just kind of outlined, and I've just called it Field-Turf Replacement Feasibility Study, and just broad categories, the background information, trying to explain to anybody who looks at it and having this posted on our website and updating the information as we get it. But the first area, I think, would be background information. Explain what we have right now. We have two turf fields, when they were installed, what the composition is. And then the second major category, the health and safety concerns, of which we're alluded to on May 5th, May 13th, and tonight, and some additional information during the interim. And then perhaps breaking it down into looking at the synthetic turf. What are the perceived benefits of synthetic turf, the costs, et cetera, and then the infill options? The chrome rubber, the coated chrome rubber, the Nike grind that we've talked about, the thermos, plastic elastomer, the sand and Envirofill, the cork and coconut husk. But, so we have the synthetic field, the costs, including the maintenance costs because some folks mistakenly believe that you put in a synthetic turf field, you don't have to do any maintenance to the field at all, and that's clearly not the case. Then also talk about natural turf. Amani alluded to it tonight, the grassroots environmental group. Patricia Wood had mentioned it. And also doing a very similar analysis with them. What's the cost to install? What's the cost to maintain? Lifespan, usage considerations, timeline. The fifth major category, I would say, would be the expert input or speakers that would talk about it. And, you know, maybe people have different opinions about it, but so we can get independent experts. And then stakeholder slash constituent feedback. And then the last part would be next steps or recommendation. But with the stakeholder constituent feedback, I don't think that's something, or these steps that I've kind of outlined, and again, I just did it this afternoon, they don't have to be concrete sequential. They can be taking place simultaneously, like setting up some sort of structure to get stakeholder and constituent feedback, whether we have a hearing, well-advertised so that people can come out and speak their mind. Not a special board meeting, but an actual hearing so people have that opportunity, kids have that opportunity, coaches have that opportunity. And we get to hear from everybody and provide another opportunity or another medium so that questions can be submitted, so that we can be doing our work to try to obtain answers. You know, what synthetic chrome rubber? You know, we've used it because we're kind of, we've studied it a little bit, but maybe a lot of folks don't know what it is. And so just to have that opportunity for people to either come in person at a hearing or even two hearings. I believe when NIAC did their bond referendum two years ago, two and a half years ago, they had three different public forums or at least opportunities, but it wasn't just about their turf fields. They had a lot of different projects that they were taking a look at. But I think it's very important to have the community involvement in this. And just, so I'm just, I'm looking at having a structure so that when the information comes in from May 5th, May 13th, May 19th, it doesn't get put in the trash can or put on this table. There's a structure. Perhaps we do almost like an annotated bibliography or a bibliography or links or something and maybe categorize it, like if we're talking about health, safety concerns, the inhalation, the ingestion, the skin absorption, the heat on the field that was brought up previously, MRSA. So that we can do this in a very systematic, structured way so that people see that. Maybe that generates a question. Maybe it generates a question amongst board members. And then Kelly or I or somebody could go get the answers. Or we have these questions ready for experts when they come to address the community. So I've rambled on for a length of time, but I just felt like I needed to get out some sort of structure. And I'd be glad to send it out via email and it's just a framework, but, you know, get the input so that we have a structure. So maybe at the next board meeting, you all say, yes, this is a structure that we want and this is the process that we should follow. Just some thoughts.
Sounds good. Okay. So your thoughts are very similar to mine, so at least we're on the same page.
Please don't say that about mine.
No offense. And, you know, we'd like to have some, an opportunity to give input when you're making that structure so that-
Absolutely.
When we come to the table, we're all very comfortable with how it's-
And it's not piecemeal. We're all, we see what the process is, what the framework is, and then we're just filling in the spots. And then if we get it on the website so that people can look at it and then it's updated at a certain time, then everybody's seeing the same thing and maybe from different perspectives, but everybody sees the same information.
Some sort of a tentative timetable, because I know there's a concern out there regarding when we'll have this work done and who's going to be able to play, you know, on where, which field. So just to address also what we think is our perspective, I know things are never exactly on the same day, but prospective timetable where we hope to accomplish all that, you know, so that we can start scheduling speakers, et cetera.
Okay. That part. I was incorrectly thinking about timetable to have the fields done where they're-
I meant that too, because, I mean, that's the question out there. When will they be ready and is this going to mean-
And that'll be dependent upon the decision that the board makes. Because if it's a certain way, then it can be done quicker. If it's a different way, it might be longer. And then some of the infill products, if we went the synthetic turf way, aren't immediately available. So there's several different factors there, so it's hard to pin down a timeline.
Right.
But if we could at least establish a framework and then discuss what timeline we need to have with the framework, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, great.
So you're going to email then to the board?
Sure. And it's just roughed out framework.
I do, I very much like the framework. I think it's good to get on board early and be systematic about it. But the framework, we can start that regardless of what the result of the vote is-
Yes.
-because these fields do need to be replaced.
Yes.
So that we can move forward with no matter what.
Right. Agreed.
Dr. Adams, do you still feel comfortable with the idea of getting the current fields tested?
Sure. The, I've had a number of parents raise concerns, but I've gotten an earful from different constituencies, some that are real concerned and some are like, "What the heck are you doing?", that kind of thing. And that's why I think if we can get accurate information out there, just so everybody can see in a very transparent way what we're doing, I think's important. So I don't know, Amani.
My recommendation is that we finish the season. It's only another week or two and that we do get, that we do get an agency to test them.
Yes. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think you'd indicate that you would get me some names so that I could call. So if you have-
Absolutely.
-some reputable companies-
Absolutely. I'm happy to-
Or agencies, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public participation, 4.01. This is public participation on any school board business, not necessarily those that are on the action item. So again, 30 minutes long, three minutes per speaker. Please post the podium, which is kind of, has been moved. State your name, your affiliation, and direct comments to the president of the board.
Say 30 minutes or three minutes?
Yeah, three, sorry.
Please.
You can do it.
Do either. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Adams, Director of the Board of Education. Captain Brad Whitebauer, Town and Rapid Police, tonight with me is Captain Thomas Culpin, also of Town and Rapid Police. I don't know if you can hear.
I don't know if you can, is that mic on?
Mic on?
It's on, but it's quiet.
I'll use my command voice to focus. As the-
It's on. Just got to blow the coast.
Okay. As the board knows, the Town and Rapid Police Department has jurisdiction over all the schools in the district and district facilities, etc., with the Orkin Connor Elementary School. Town and Rapid Police Chief recently sent a letter to all members of the Board of Education asking each of you, and it was a very detailed letter. It's regarding a serious matter that's impacting the district.
Excuse me, Captain Whitebauer, just sorry to interrupt. The letter was received by the school district yesterday and so the board members received their letter tonight. I know it's detailed, but they probably haven't had a chance to read it, so just wanted you to know that.
I understand that, Dr. Adams, and that's why my remarks are going to be different than they were going to be prior to that information being received. That being said, because members of the board had not had a chance to look at the letter until just now, I refrain from discussing further. Captain Culpin and I were both here tonight to address the board about those issues that are outlined in that letter. It does seem, Dr. Adams, only proper and fair to allow the board a chance to discuss it. But that being said, I guess we'll wait and see what happens and make a decision whether we need to come back and continue to discuss it further. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Kern. I'm a mother of two Montebello students, two Montebello students, yes, and work in the guidance department at the high school. While we sit in this room awaiting the hopeful passing of the budget, my thoughts move to the idea of commencement and how in a few short weeks, July 1st, and our new school year begins. The book will reset, and if the probability of incumbency rings true, then this table will be filled with familiar faces once again for the 2015-2016 school year. So much of the discussion this year has been about fiscal responsibility. At the candidates forum, many of the would-be board members cited fiscal responsibility as a goal for the district. And while I do agree and believe in fiscal responsibility, that idea struck me. Because fiscal responsibility isn't a goal, but more of an expectation. It's the ladder we should use to climb to reach our goals. I know we have a strategic planning committee, and shame on me, Dr. Hayward, for never attending any of those meetings. And I apologize and will make a point to try and get there next year. Yet I have been to many board meetings and I think the discussion regarding where we will be in the next five years has been lacking. We've survived our fair share of financial issues, including a very, very public investigation of our human resource records and two years ago, a daunting deficit. We made it through these struggles and can look to a bright future. And as a mother and an educator, I just wonder what that future looks like? I wonder and talk to my husband about often, what are our goals? Although our academic program is still strong, we have made some cuts over the past few years. Should we relook at AVID at the elementary and middle school levels? How has the lack of the district-based summer school impacted our students who failed to achieve proficiency? And what else can we do to give our students the tools they need to be successful in life? I think the proposed budget is a good one. I emailed the Board of Education some time ago praising the proposed additional staffing to support elementary literacy, to address the changing standards for students whose native language is not English, and for the much-needed addition to the PPS staff. And thank you so much for responding to that email. I really appreciated it. Let's keep those kinds of discussions going. Let's ask those questions and talk about them at these board meetings. And I know, together, we can work on the ever-changing process of finding the answers and figuring out where our true north is.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public participation portion of the meeting. There's no executive, right? Oh, we're not going into executive session? Right, right, right. So we're just going to adjourn the meeting until, we got to come back, right? Exactly. All right, so meeting adjourned? Anthony, Amani, Andy, Scott, the saying, "Aye, aye."